All right, now I'd like to call me in order. Uh, no, you don't have to. I need to call for a, uh, motion to reconvene in open session.
So move.
Your second?
Second.
You're moving second and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Order of business, any suggestions for changing the order of business? It's fairly short agenda tonight, so. Public appearances, and I don't believe we have any. Now I'd like a motion for approval of consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Derek moved it and seconded. Susan seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Recognitions, recognition information.
Okay, we do have, um, four this evening, and it's okay, I'd like to read those. Uh, we just added it to your board docs later, you know, this afternoon in writing, but. So Taylor Prairie, in partnership with Manona Public Library, has been awarded a DPI Connect and Create Grant for Connect with STEAM, an initiative to serve 4K through first grade students, their families, and the population who visits Manona Public Library. Taylor Prairie School Library acts as its students' primary library as Cottage Grove Designative Public Library. We believe students will benefit from increased access to creative experiences and the opportunity to build relationships and share learning through a special partnership between a public school and a public library. Thank you to Elizabeth Wodzinski and Alyson, excuse me, Allison Wade up at Taylor Prairie for working on this project with launches this school year.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
I really think that we need to start moving more towards STEAM, including arts, uh, into rather than staff, because we're excluding a big portion of growth for students. And I'd like to see everybody move into more STEAM-oriented curriculum. I think that's the way we need to add, so. And I know other districts are starting to do that. That's an important step, so I'm glad, I was glad to see that.
Great, thank you. Uh, second, like to recognize folks involved with the Manona Grove New Teacher Project. Um, the orientation is off to a great start this week, led by our teacher mentors, Dawn May and Sonia Bane. The orientation hosts twenty-nine new teacher hires this year. New teachers are spending the weekend to know the ins and outs of the district and their schools. For the first time this year, Dawn and Sonia organized a very successful teacher-student-parent parent question and answer panel. Our principals and new teachers agree that working with our mentors is one of the most important and valuable professional development opportunities that our district provides for new educators. Many of our new teachers assume leadership roles in the district shortly after completing the mentorship as a direct result of their professional growth during this time. A big thank you to Dawn and Sonia. Um, athletics. Our Manona Grove Athletic Coaches begin the eighteen-nineteen school year with a coaches' kickoff meeting to review sports expectations and the importance of engaging students through athletics. Here, coaches work a, um, work a challenge as part of a teams' scavenger hunt. On August sixth, Manona Grove Athletics hosted a leadership workshop for coaches and student athletes. Speaker Cory Dobbs introduced concepts from his work with Academy for Sport Leadership on how to build a high-performance team culture. Thank you to athletic director Jeff Schreiner and their coaches for working with our student athletes. And lastly, um, talk about some of the summer work of our, uh, our staff at Manona Grove. This summer, a majority of Manona Grove teachers spent some time engaged in important work for the two thousand and eighteen-nineteen school year. Over seventeen-hundred hours were spent on curriculum standards work, equity-related professional learning, co-planning and co-teaching, and more. Summer provides an opportunity for our teachers to do impactful, thoughtful work without the pressures that come with the school year, such as papers, degree, lesson plans, et cetera. This work included PBIS, restorative practices, a readers-writers workshop, science discovery kits, music, scope and sequence, math work, and more. Again, thank you to our teachers and staff for their commitment and hard work.
Susan?
Um, I'd like to also add to Dan's comments about the new teacher, um, programs. They invited us for lunch that day, and some of us were able to go. And it was really insightful to sit with a couple of the new teachers and, and one of the individuals I sat next to was going to be a counselor at Glacial Drumland and is a very experienced person. They've been in, um, another school district for eighteen or nineteen years and chose to come here. And also had some very interesting insights about things that we do and just a great approach. It was a great event, and I thought a great opportunity and a wonderful way to put that together. Dawn and Sonia were really individually working hard. The very next day, I ran, ran to the grocery store and they were getting snacks for the event themselves in the middle of the day, so I mean, it was pretty powerful. The other thing I wanted to do is I want to sincerely thank, um, to begin with, the football team and Brandon Beckwith for coming down and helping, um, with the, um, sandbagging of the jeopardized properties in the city of Manona. They just showed up and sat down and bagged until football practice time, then went to football practice time and were coming back, so that was amazing. And then there were a significant number of our students who just showed up on their own from the neighborhood to help. So whatever we're doing in relation to having students understand, when you're needed, come and help. And many came without their parents, and they came with wagons and things to help with. It really makes you feel good. So I'd like to recognize those people that were involved.
Correspondents' announcements. Superintendent's report, Dan?
Okay, so, um, I have three items that were listed. I have a short, you know, written report or some attachment that, that speaks to it all, so I won't repeat everything that's in the written report, but just briefly, the Dane County Equity Consortium wanted to bring that to the board's attention. There was a brief mention of it, I think, in an earlier memo. Really, really excited about the work of this group. So we have sixteen school districts in Dane County that came together for a planning meeting on July thirty-first to really look at how can we work together, um, in our, you know, this important work? And instead of all of us trying to work, you know, so hard in isolation, um, it was really exciting to see the enthusiasm of, of, of all the districts. It was an expectation that every school's district superintendent attend, as well as they could bring one or two support, um, or other staff members as well. And, uh, our own Shelby Steele is going to be part of the, um, the planning committee, uh, one of four individuals, uh, to help us move forward with our course. I just attached this afternoon the actual notes from that meeting. I just received them, so if you later, if you have an opportunity, please make sure you read through that, and you're going to hear more about this as we come. We absolutely are committed to working and planning together, um, and as I said, it's something that not only myself, our entire team is excited about, uh, learning and growing, you know, with our, our colleagues in Dane County. Secondly, um, annexation petition process. So I attached for you a memo, uh, from our attorney that just talks about the process. Uh, we're not bringing forth the petition for board approval at this time, uh, but just want you to know that when the time comes, um, here's the process. It'll go through the board would actually have to approve moving forth with that petition. Um, so we're in the process of having discussions, you know, with the folks, you know, from the village, um, about what that might be, and, and so that when the board, we'll have all the information the board needs in order to make decisions about that moving forward. Um, in that memo, you'll see that there's, uh, we've had some discussions about possibly, um, you know, engaging with others in a, in a joint petition, and, and that'll be something we'll talk more when the time comes, um, you know, to move forward with that. And then the third piece, uh, the seclusion and restraint report. This is a statutorily required, um, report that, um, we, all boards receive every year, so it's the same format that you, you know, from our, our experienced board members that receive every year, just showing the number of incidents. This is actually compiled at the building level. Krista Foster puts together the report then for the board, and she did a nice job with an explanation about what these numbers mean and so on. So I think it kind of speaks for itself, but if there's any questions on that, we can certainly provide clarity also.
Okay, questions? Very good.
Okay, and if it's okay, just, I have a couple of real quick items that were not included in the written reports, just not to go into in depth. First of all, um, I want to let you know that we'll give a report at a future meeting in much more detail regarding our Manona Drive property. You're aware that Jared attended a meeting, um, last, or two weeks ago, and then there's another meeting this week with Madison Plan Commission about the possible demolition of that building. Of course, that will not happen without it coming to the board, you know, uh, but we're in the process of at least seeking permission through that, the permission access. So the Madison Plan Commission did approve, um, at their meeting on Monday, uh, that application, and so there's still, you know, quite a bit of time involved, a lot of things that have to happen before that, that would come through, so just want to give you heads up that happened. A lot more information to come in the future.
Is there approval for both towers?
Just the one, I'm in order drive at this time.
That's what I thought I did.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll add that to the agenda so we can go a full report here in the near future.
What seems to be the issue on? Both, the other one?
Yeah, I, we probably should hold that discussion for, you know. Okay. All right, and then the other thing that just came to our attention this afternoon, uh, just a quick FYI, you're aware that, um, you know, the, the potential flooding, you know, in the city of Manona, uh, as Lake Manona continues to rise. So the Red Cross did contact us today. There's, and the forecast perhaps for more rain this weekend. Should the need arise that any families are displaced, uh, we, our, uh, our schools are sites, you know, to, uh, you know, host in that sort of situation, and so we're making arrangements or have arrangements made that should Wentworth School need to be available, that it will be. You know, hopefully that won't come to fruition, but, uh, we're prepared, you know, should that happen, so. And if that would, certainly we will communicate with the board.
If you come help sandbag, hopefully we can avoid.
Okay, and lastly, again, I'll follow up in writing with this, but just a reminder, um, we welcome back our teachers, um, and all staff next week on Tuesday, and then Thursday, the thirtieth, is when we have our welcome back program in the district, in the high school, with a breakfast in the commons, and then a welcome back program at, you know, eight-thirty in the high school auditorium. Okay, I'll send out a memo, you know, with those dates as a reminder, but all board members are invited and encouraged to attend if you, if you can.
So the board members are invited to the breakfast?
Yes, absolutely.
And the welcome back is Tuesday, the twenty?
No, everything is on Thursday. Yeah, the breakfast and the welcome back message. So the, the teachers start in their buildings for the first two days. They have plenty of work to do there, and then on Thursday, we bring everyone together. So Thursday, the thirtieth.
Good, thank you. What reports starting with personnel, Dean?
Personnel committee, that, to, we, we focused on the, uh, likely bargaining regarding the teacher compensation plan and, uh, heard, uh, teachers' concerns that, uh, and, uh, we had, I think it was a pretty wide-ranging discussion of various issues surrounding that. Nothing was resolved, and, uh, we'll be back at it.
Susan?
Dean, it was my question. The teachers presented materials, but we didn't really meet as a committee and discuss the materials at that point.
That's true.
Okay, so basically what we got was, it was in a meeting confer. So technically, we received information from them, but we haven't as a committee. Generally, it's my understanding that as a committee, what we do is they present information to us, then we as a committee discuss it. Administration discusses it, and they bring a recommendation, and then we discuss their recommendation, and then we as a committee discuss it. There was some, uh, there were some comments about that. Normally, we don't process that way, but I, I mean, we didn't meet, we didn't sit as a committee and have a discussion about the materials that were presented.
As I reported, we heard from the teachers.
You said we had thorough discussion, go on and go. I was just clarifying.
Okay, I stand corrected. We had some, we had some discussion, mostly questions.
Not as a committee.
But not, but not as a, not as a committee without the teachers. We heard from the teachers mostly and had some feedback, didn't we?
Not committee feedback?
No, individual feedback.
Which normally we don't do, right? Normally, we meet as a committee on the issue.
No, that's not true. We, we often, often individual members ask questions or have a feedback, and we had, we had some of that. I know Eric and I both asked questions.
And provided personal comments on the issue. So I'm, I'm just clarifying, as a committee to the board, normally what we do is take that material and discuss it as a committee, right?
We have not done that.
That's what we've always done before.
We had, as I reported, we, I didn't report, we did that, no.
Right.
We did not do that. I simply reported that we heard various, we heard teacher proposals and various teachers express their concerns, and, uh, and then some board members responded briefly, but we did not have a thorough discussion, either with the teachers or among the committee members themselves.
Okay. Questions for Dean? Jeff's not with us tonight, so we'll leave the communication, Community Engagement Communication Government Relations Committee for when he can attend. They did, there was an initial kickoff meeting that had a productive discussion, but we'll let Jeff talk about that more. Teaching, Learning, and Equity Committee, Eric, you wanted to come in on this?
Just want to update that we're making the final, um, changes, um, and then we're going to hopefully be able to make an announcement to the community, for community members for Teaching, Learning, Equity, um, Committee, and the dates we're looking at is we're going to ask for applications due by the September seventh, and then review them, and then notify by September twelve.
Okay.
And, yeah. Oh, could you tell us just a little bit of your thoughts about the composition of the committee?
Well, I mean, we don't know who the composition is other than Andrew, myself, and Susan right now.
No, I just meant, is it just community members, or is it teachers, or?
I think, I mean, I, ideally, I'd like to open it up to all community members, and I hope that some teachers would be a part of that.
And they, and the teachers apply just like a community member?
Well, right now, the way that it's set up is we're seeking community members, so I, I think that I would leave it open to us to discuss if we want to include teachers, or maybe even I, some of the things that came up in the past with even, um, students, so, but I think it would be best if the committee, um, we got a committee started, and then if we want to add teachers or students to that at that point, after we discuss it, then that would be a lot to do.
So again, it's just that people have asked about it. So your thought is you're going to have applications for community members?
The applications for community members, we're making final drafts, and those, hopefully we can release to the public, uh, next week. And then the applications will be due on Tuesday, September seventh. Then we review those, and then we make the announcements for the, uh, committee on September twelve.
Do you have any thought about how large you want that to be?
So, I, I think I'd like to discuss that more with Susan and Andrew, um, because we haven't really had a chance to meet yet, so I think we want to just get this first started first, and then move forward after that, so.
That'd be great, because I, I just had people ask about it, and I told them to ask you. And then I did have one teacher ask.
Yeah, my breakfast would actually be a week, so we have the public announcement first before people contact us. That's why I, I haven't even contacted people, and then once we make that announcement, that'd be the time to have them contact me or Susan or Andrew or somebody on the committee.
Thanks.
Okay. Uh, we're going to link the possible action items, and that begins, brings us to discussion consideration of the discussion items in the referendum communications.
Okay.
Now, I just, actually, I just wanted to say, and I apologize, um, I'm going to have to leave in about ten minutes because of high water, and, uh, then Andy will continue to chair the meeting. Yes, sometimes.
So we'd like to invite our communications team to join us at the presentation table, and, uh, what we'd like to do tonight, there's a lot of documents that are attached on board docs, but, uh, we'll talk about, you know, each of those, how they're created, and there's, uh, obviously many things that we're looking for some board feedback, you know, on as we move forward. And so, uh, clearly, this is not something that just started, you know, um, the night of August eighth from the Board of Doc resolution. Our team has been working on this for months, um, in draft format, and, uh, and so with that, um, we'll speak to the documents that have been created, as well as the role of each of the individuals, um, that are involved, and so we're clear about how we're moving forward with our communications. So, with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to the team, and Andy can kick it off here.
Sure, bear with us for one second while we get some materials distributed here. We've got some hard copy here, which will probably be a lot easier to review than material online.
Can you message matrix?
There you go. There you go.
Thanks.
All right, so thank you, everyone, for having us in to talk about the, uh, pre-referendum communications plan. Uh, my name's Andy Lyons, I work for Epstein U.N. Architects, and maybe, uh, we should just have everybody kind of introduce themselves. I think everybody knows one another, uh, but let's, uh, let's do it anyway. Uh, we can talk a little bit about our roles and responsibilities on the team. I'll talk a little bit, uh, about, um, the communications, uh, plan itself, and then we'll, uh, move, uh, move forward. Um, again, Andy Lyons, Epstein U.N. Architects. I'm one of EUA's engagement specialists, uh, worked closely with the FAC throughout their planning process, and now with the district as we move through this, uh, pre-referendum communications, uh, plan.
Katie Burns-Pizer, Manona Grove, Director of Communications and Community Engagement. Hopefully you're all. And I'm Kristin Mills, now I'm with Fendorf. I'm the Director of our Education Market and Communication Services. So I spend a hundred percent of my time working with our school clients, um, and focus a lot on communications during a planning phase, during, um, a referendum phase, and then through our construction projects as well.
So there are really five-ish or so things that we want to get accomplished, uh, tonight. First off, we want to review with you some of the work that has already been completed. Uh, we're going to spend a fair amount of time on a three-month plan, but it's really important for you to understand that we have been engaged with the district for quite some time, and this plan is built on, uh, a fair number of materials that have already been generated and distributed to the, to the community. We also want to talk, obviously, about that real intensive, three-month-ish, uh, communications, uh, pre-referendum communications, uh, plan. We'll go over that in some degree of detail, so you have a good understanding of, uh, what is planned, and of course, the next couple of months leading up to, uh, Election Day. Uh, we want to highlight a couple of specific items in that plan and gather some of your feedback, um, so we're able to make any adjustments. It's really important, um, for you to understand and, and for, for me to say that, uh, Kristin and, and myself, we just, we, we, we've got a fair amount of experience doing this, but we just know what we know. We're a product of our, uh, experiences. What we don't know terribly well is, uh, the, the school district of, uh, Manona, Manona Grove. We don't know the, the community, um, of Manona or Cottage Grove, and we, we really look to you for that, uh, for that local knowledge. Um, so that's, I think, really important to say, and Katie has been just an invaluable experience in helping us, uh, through that process and providing that, uh, that, that local knowledge. So we want to gather your input. It's really important, uh, because you provide that, uh, that local lens on this, uh, this communications, uh, plan. We want to review with you some materials that have already been completed and are kind of in the queue and, uh, and ready to go, and then finally take, uh, whatever questions you, you may have. So that's our general plan for this evening. Uh, hopefully, we won't take up too much of your time, but we want to make sure that we, uh, give this adequate time for, uh, for conversation, because it is a really important, uh, topic. The informational campaign gives your community, uh, an opportunity to get all of the facts that they need in advance of the referendum to make a, an informed decision. We want to make sure that, um, they, they have, uh, they have that information. So with that, um, I'm going to turn it over to Kristin. She'll talk a little bit about, uh, some of the materials that this plan is built upon, some of those materials that have already gone out and serve as the, the foundation for the work that we're doing now.
So, um, the materials I'm going to highlight for you are not distributed. Um, I know there's some paperwork in front of you, but, um, they're all things that you've seen before. So just as a reminder, um, when your facility committee got together, um, there's some work that's being done in the backend to share some of that information out to your community, your broader community, so that they're aware of what's happening. So you may recall that last spring, there was a district-wide mailing. It was a postcard that looked like this. Um, this postcard advertised a couple of the community updates that took place. Those were done in February, so we wanted to make sure that every single community member received the information about those updates that took place. This also let them know that there was a community survey coming, so we had those pieces of information bold on here, so that they were aware that they could come learn information, and they were going to have an opportunity to provide some feedback in the spring. So this was a first, um, district-wide piece that went out to all households. Hopefully, um, what you saw and you might remember too is, um, it feels like a lot of the other things that you do here in the district with regards to communication. So everything that we did, even if we are helping to design, we have brand guidelines that are in place, so we're using your colors, your fonts, everything that's been approved by the district. There's a couple other, um, elements that come into play, especially now, um, you'll hear about with the referendum, um, and also with the facility, um, committee process, but everything complements what you're doing already. So that first mailer went out, and then after that, obviously, the survey came out that was sent out by School Perceptions. The nice thing about the survey is it gave an opportunity for people to, um, give feedback, but it's also a communication tool. So we made sure that some of the graphics that we were using that represented the growth and enrollment, that those were represented in here as well. So again, this went to every household in the school district, so, um, another district-wide piece that went out. When that survey was happening, some of you may recall too, there was a lot that, um, was done with regards to advertising and social media. So we also created a lot of graphics that could be used on your social media feeds, and we did multiple versions of them, so if people were looking at social media periodically, they were seeing something fresh, maybe it had a new photo in it, or the placement was a little different, so definitely a lot of work, um, to engage that population or that stakeholder group that was interested in that. So, um, different types of ads, different types of graphics went along, um, to promote the survey. And it was also done at different stages. There was a series that went out that promoted that the survey was coming. There was another series that promoted that the survey was out, and if you didn't receive it, to let us know. And then there was another one that also reminded people to take the survey. So, um, lots of opportunities to get, um, the word out that way. Um, the next piece that, um, that we did, again, community-wide, so making sure that all of the work that's being done, um, on the backend is being shared with the community. There was another district-wide, um, postcard that went out that hopefully looks familiar, and this highlighted some of the survey results. So again, same look, same feel, a couple of key facts. Um, I think we've talked before about the fact that it's, it's always a balance of the right amount of content that we do communicate out. If we send out too much information, it can be really overwhelming to people, and they almost get turned off by that, but if we don't have enough, people are looking for more, so we, we try really hard to strike that balance and give enough information and always direct people back to the website. That is your repository of all kinds of information, so those people that do want to learn a lot more can always go there. So all of these pieces that we've done have also directed people back to the website for more information. But again, trying to have a couple graphic elements that draw their attention to what's really important. This one also focused on the what's next. So it was, "Thank you for taking the survey, here's some of our survey results, here's what's coming," that reminder of growth, so trying to plant the seed of a couple of those messages that we've heard loud and clear that are really important. those messages that we've heard loud and clear that are really important to you.
If I may for a minute, some folks at the Community Engagement Committee thought that that was a very effective communication.
Oh, good.
That just received it and they thought that was very well done.
Excellent, excellent. So similarly, there's also one more piece that we did more recently, in addition to creating some templates and other information, was one more postcard. And we are doing postcards because they are a simple, lower-cost way of getting in front of people, also for so many of us that are really busy and we pick up something and we glance at it and, you know, maybe that's as far as it goes. Hopefully the message is coming across really easily. So once you as a board decided that yes, you were going to referendum, we wanted to be sure that the community knew. So they knew there was planning happening, they knew there was a survey, they knew what the survey results were, they had opportunities to come listen and hear, and now they know we're going to referendum. So again, the focus is really on those two questions, reinforcement of the needs, started to introduce some icons around needs. You hopefully saw on there too that some of this came from feedback we directly got from you as a board. Safety and security was something that you really wanted to emphasize, so we made sure that that was part of the messaging that came through. And then also on the backside, a lot of information about how to get more because there's going to be a lot coming up. So those were some of the district-wide pieces that have gone out, so hopefully people have seen them. I'm sure some people, even though they maybe got all of these in the mailbox, maybe didn't catch them, but we're doing our best to try to make sure that they're getting the information that they need. So these are some of the pieces that really, you know, led us to kind of today, in addition to some other things, but the more significant ones.
So I think the district has done with these mailings a really nice job in establishing a foundation of needs. They're making the case before the community, they're getting the word out about those needs and now we've got an authorized referendum and we're entering that really intensive two-and-a-half, three-month phase when we communicate targeted set of facts about that referendum. Our goal is to provide as much factual information to the residents as possible, so again, they're able to make an informed decision come November 6th. And by making an informed decision and providing information, we mean again, about the needs, but also about the options or the option that has risen to the fore about the costs and the rationale behind why that option was ultimately chosen. So I want to turn your attention to this large landscape document, 11 by 17, which outlines in fairly, a fairly high level of detail, the communications plan moving forward over the course of the next three months. It's important to understand that, again, this is a high-level plan, it is essentially a plan of plans and there are a number of different kind of sub-plans that happen or that are going on underneath this high-level information. A great example of that is the master calendar of events that you see about halfway down. Katie will be talking a little bit more specifically about that calendar of events. But I just wanted to take you through this, again, fairly quickly and in a fairly high level of detail. It's really important that you understand that the timing as we move forward to November 6th is really intentional and you see that in part where we outline the milestones, a number of really important milestones that are happening and throughout the school calendar, those back-to-school days, for example, in or around the week of August 27th are really important dates, obviously. So the timing of this is very, very intentional. One thing that I'll point out, we've got early voting happening October beginning in Menona on October 8th. We think in the town of Cottage Grove on October 8th as well. They typically use a four-week period for absentee early voting and then the final two weeks prior to the election beginning on October 22nd in the village of Cottage Grove. One of the really significant trends that we've seen since 2016 is the increase in the number of people that are voting early absentee. In Cottage Grove and Menona combined, in 2016, it was about 38% of all votes cast were vote early absentee. So that forces us to move our timeline up, ensuring that those early absentee voters have the information they need to again, make an informed decision come their election day, which is something other obviously than November 6th. So that's very intentional. Any questions about that? Eric, did you have a question about that?
No.
No, okay. So let's go through some of these materials. First of all, planning. The communications team is planning or meeting on a weekly basis with the administration. We meet face-to-face every other week, by phone in the off weeks. We plan, we strategize, we review materials and ultimately approve the materials that go out to the public. So that's happening on a weekly basis, the group is meeting on a weekly basis. I want to talk a little bit about the kind of the hard copy materials that we have planned. Kristin will talk a little bit in a moment or two about standing banners and display boards that hopefully you'll be popping up, you'll see popping up around the community in the not-so-distant future. One of the kind of the foundational pieces of material you'll see here about halfway down the page, that being a fact sheet. We're planning on mailing that fact sheet out to all families, or excuse me, to all residences in the district. That will be a front and back, two-sided mailer that will include all the foundational information about needs, about costs, about the option. It'll be kind of the basis moving forward from which other materials are developed. That fact sheet is a really critical communications vehicle. Built off of that fact sheet is a little bit more detailed piece, a little bit further down, that special newsletter. I should say, moving back to the fact sheet, we plan that for right around the beginning of school, so hopefully that will land in mailboxes not too long after school is in session. Built off of that fact sheet, we've got a special newsletter. We haven't yet talked in detail about what that content will include, but it'll be a little bit more detailed than the fact sheet. It'll probably focus a little bit more on the solution and the rationale for that solution. We're targeting that for the week of October 8th. That lines up really nicely with the opening of early absentee voting. Also for that same week, moving further down the page here, we've got a couple of referendum open houses planned, one on the 8th and one on the 9th. Can't remember our days, I believe the 8th is in Menona, the 9th is in Cottage Grove. Again, not unlike the events hosted in February, the community open houses or the community updates and the session that was held in January, this is a really nice opportunity for the community to come in, presentation on the referendum plan, costs, needs, rationale, and then get their questions answered in a Q&amp;A type format. You know, we've heard some folks say that, you know, attendance isn't typically a really great at these sessions, but it almost feels like something that we need to do, one of those talks is that we need to check to ensure that everybody has an opportunity to engage in the process. Couple of additional events that I'll turn your attention to, Donuts with Dan upcoming.
Tomorrow.
Right, yeah, tomorrow. Yeah, very excited about Donuts with Dan. Dan has very graciously given about an hour of your time, right? Hopefully he will be spread around the community in essentially kind of a free-form, open-ended Q&amp;A session with the superintendent. And this is something that's really nice, not only during this pre-referendum planning, pre-referendum communications phase, but also something that could carry forward for an extended period of time. These Q&amp;A sessions don't necessarily need to be about the referendum itself, but it's one of those things that really helps develop relationships and build goodwill between the district and the community that it serves. So I think we're collectively really excited about that session.
And Dennis equally.
Absolutely.
Katie will talk a little bit more about events in a few moments. I'll continue to move down the list, though we are going to try to make use of traditional media. The Herald Independent has been a really nice resource for the district thus far, they've been really receptive to press releases that we have offered. And not too long ago, we started exploring the potential of a three- or four-piece series of articles with the Herald Independent as the referendum date approaches in November. So I think that needs to be fleshed out a little bit more, but it's kind of an overture that the Herald Independent has made and that hopefully we can certainly take advantage of. Social media, critical piece in this. The district will continue to make good use of social media. And one of the things that I think Dan is also willing to try at least is a Facebook Q&amp;A live session. We've got one slotted in for the middle of September, you see that towards the very, very bottom of the page. If you're familiar with Facebook Live, it's like a live broadcast on your smartphone through Facebook. We've seen these work quite well with community members submitting text questions and then kind of on a ongoing basis, live environment, the superintendent or a spokesperson for the district answering those questions. So we're going to try that out, I think, see if it works. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. Probably takes no more than an hour to try to pull off. If it does work, hopefully we'll be reaching some people that we wouldn't otherwise reach and we'll try to slot a couple more in as November 6th approaches. And then finally, just want to highlight, and maybe Katie can talk a little bit more about this as we turn it over to her, Menona Community Media, really nice resource here in town and Katie's working closely with them to try to put together at least one video. So that is kind of the overview of the communications plan as it stands right now. It's important that you understand that this is a living document, we're on, I think, version three, yeah, version three of this. This will continue to evolve as we move towards November 6th. So please understand that, but those are the basic elements that we have in place right now. Any questions? No? Okay.
That's good.
All right. Couple of things that we want to highlight in particular and try to get your feedback First is this, I didn't grab mine, sorry. First is this landscape eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheet entitled "Key Messaging Matrix" or "Key Messages Matrix." First, a word or two about what this is. Actually, before I say that, a word or two about what this is not. This is not a document that is meant for publication or distribution. Rather, what this is, is our attempt to try to boil down in a nice, clear, and concise way what we think this referendum is all about. We tried to identify the key messages and some of the evidence that supports those key messages and the action that the district is taking in response to that evidence. So this is, from your perspective maybe, a nice cheat sheet that you can use as you're out talking with folks around the community. It could be used as a set of talking points for board members or other key communicators that are somehow affiliated with the district. We also think that this also, this serves as a nice kind of basis from which we can develop our communication materials that are meant for print and publication. It's just kind of a nice way for us to ground our thinking and a nice resource so that everybody is talking from the same set of information and talking points. Wanted to get your take on that, if you've had an opportunity to review it. Anything strike you as interesting, any input that you would provide, anything that you would change out of it? Any thoughts at all? Is it a document that you might use?
I think it is useful and I think it's nice to have all this information readily available. And the only thing that I was wondering is because there's confusion about the safety grants on page two where it says the district applied for and received separate school safety grant. Maybe for us, even adding the information, that was limited to window film and because people will say, "Well, why can't you use that for the doors, why can't you use that for this?"
A little more detail there.
Just slightly might be helpful just so we know what we're talking about.
Any other thoughts on this document? Yes, no, carry on?
Go ahead, I guess you can carry on.
All right. All right. So the other document that I wanted to get your feedback from is this, I would say significantly more detailed FAQ document that I passed around. Hopefully it was also posted on Board Docs at some point last week. This is meant for public consumption. We heard on a couple of different occasions from the board that an FAQ document is important. We are with this document, hopefully responding to that need. That said, I would refer back to some comments that I made earlier. We really want to get your feedback on what we're addressing here. You have the local knowledge, you're out talking to community members, do you have a good sense of what they, what sort of questions they're asking? Is there anything here that's not addressed or you would address in a different way?
Kind of it's about Maywood, just because I suspect that'll continue to come up.
Okay.
I was just looking at it to see where I might add it, but maybe even in the second paragraph, when it says in addition, "Maywood small size," I might add, "and lack of a gymnasium."
Mm-hmm, okay.
I was looking at it, also I had it built for younger students, and it was built as a primary school, so it's limited, Maywood's limited capacity and primary school construction. I'm not sure if that'd be a clear way to say it, but so people are aware that it's really built for little kids, kind of like we talked about.
Sure, the primary school configuration.
And it's even less accommodating because there's no gymnasium.
Sure.
It just makes it even that much more impractical to consider using it rather than its current use.
Sure, I think that's a good point. Thank you. Other thoughts? Yes, Susan?
Again, just checking in a correction.
Yeah.
Again, because Susan brought up the Maywood Nichols issue in her first bullet. It says, "If it, Maywood, is utilized."
Oh, okay. Yep, so just.
Sorry, English lit made.
Yeah, scratch that, yeah. Yeah, yep.
Sorry.
Yeah.
There's one concern that I heard that I won't see on here. I mean, I just missed it, but I don't know if, I think it should be up there because it's not answered. There's been feedback from a lot of community members about why, not why there isn't a high school, but why wasn't it included on the survey? So I don't know if there's a way to clarify that the reason it wasn't included on the survey was because of this, or, you know, because of one, because of two. Then it kind of comes back and says, "A survey completed by more than 1,800 district residents and staff indicated strong support for referendum of 7 million." I just think maybe in that section, we should have some clarification, is, you know, we didn't include it on the survey because the facilities committee looked at it. And when they looked at the high school, they didn't, because of these reasons, they didn't think that it was for this plan, you know? I think we should maybe clarify.
And the intent of the survey was to test those initial recommendations.
Right. There was never the intent of the survey to include the high school question on there because the facilities committee already discussed that as a committee. I mean, I don't know how you would. I was trying to say.
I would add to Eric's thought, it wasn't just the high school. I was even surprised that the only choices were the two options. And I agree with Eric, that's been something people have been concerned about because they said, "You only gave me two options, so I either liked it or didn't like it, or liked one better than the other." But there was nothing else on there. So I do think an FAQ would be, why don't you have a community response on the other options, including the high school? Because that's the one that's come back at us.
And are you talking about why wasn't there a 3K5 option for Cottage Grove? Is that what we?
No, we're talking about all the other options.
Well, I'm just trying to clarify what you mean wasn't included, other than the high school in the survey.
There were other options that the committee looked at other than the 35. Again, they looked at the K2, they looked at, and again, that's confusing because now we're talking about different configurations. They looked at the K5.
Maybe you could say, maybe there could be a question about.
Other options that were not addressed.
Yeah, options not addressed on the survey. I don't know.
The survey questions only addressed, again, I don't know how you're going to say that, but that's one of the criticisms we've got.
Sure, and I think ultimately the FAC looked at seven, maybe eight different options, and really it was the charge of the FAC to do that narrowing process to lead to.
I would like to see more to see that.
Yeah.
And specifically for the high school, because that's been the one that keeps coming back.
And I think in addressing the high school, you could start off with, the chart was to meet the immediate needs, which is elementary space. High school is perceived to be questionable and further removed. I mean, they're not immediate, I don't know how you want to say that or how much you want to say about it, but in addition to the cost, not so extensive.
The other question I continue to get a lot is, why don't you just bus the fifth graders? So I, I don't know if you really want to answer that, but, well, it's a question I get.
Could, because bus them where? I mean.
That's what, they said to Nichols, that's what they said.
Because there's no, yeah, there's no, I mean, you know, we talked about that, and there were two things with that. I mean, one, and maybe you want to say this.
See, they can do that in the FAQ.
Right, well, right, but maybe you want to say, because the board did make a commitment to educating elementary students in their own communities.
Yeah, that was part of that.
That was a big piece of that.
That was part of the long-term studies, planning.
Why?
And that would be why, because we believed elementary students should be educated in their home communities. And we did reiterate that with this board. I mean, the former board made the same, you know, commitment like seven years ago. Okay. Because we've been talking about this stuff for a while. And then, you know, it's an ongoing additional, I mean, cost of busing, and then when we're, we don't have space for them, we have to do some remodeling at Winnequa to make, I mean, at Nichols. Even if we had space, we don't really have room for them. I mean, we, the only way that could even work really would be to take some of our younger grades from Winnequa to Nichols and then bus them to Winnequa probably. And I don't know that we have the classroom space. So I think the main point is we don't really have enough space for them in Manona.
Part of that answers the space, but the other part is the cost of the busing.
And the cost of transportation.
And so if you're going to, it seems to me that Jared could help you with the cost of busing 200.
Yeah, as an ongoing.
200 kids, eight miles plus the time and that sort of thing. I think that would bury that issue to some extent.
It's sort of a.
Because over time, you've been almost billed as a school with the busing costs.
Yeah. Well, you'd be busing them with the high school kids, I suppose. I mean, it would be, yeah, it would be, but yeah, it's sort of a three-fold answer, and it's kind of, I think when it was talked about, it was only ever talked about as a very short-term solution, it won't even really work for that because of the space issues.
I think we can just let them work on it. I'm just saying, I think what's helpful is if people have stopped you and asked questions and you're not seeing the question or the answer on this, this is a great place to put it because I know it's.
And like the other, sorry, but like the other working documents, like the communication plan, this can be updated at any time. So if you hear questions, when we're out in meetings and we're hearing the same question over and over again, we'll pop it in here and we'll add it to the website and we'll add it to this document for everyone to have access to.
I think it will be updated because we're going to hear.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
That's what you said.
I meant that as more of an encouragement to make sure you're sending us those things. When you hear them, make sure you send me an email and say, or send Jan an email and say, "I heard this question three times last week."
With the tax impact, when I read this, just to maybe this might need to be clarified, I picture myself as a common person, so common people read this, this is my opinion. For a $200,000 house, you're looking at a total of $150 per year for 20 years, correct? Is that right?
So the one figure would represent the highest point. There might be years where.
Right, of course, but it's for 20 years is the part that.
The debt would be financed for 20 years. The operational is embedded into revenue, but there's no falloff unless the board chooses to underlet it. Okay. So that, I think, is what needs a little bit of clarification.
Because it says the borrowing term is 20 years, but I could see people reading that and not really understanding that that's going to be there for 20 years. So if you live here for 20 years, so how long is my taxes going to, you know, is it going to be $150, or how many years? For 20 years?
And after that, that falls off, the operational.
Because I don't know, maybe look at, maybe like, just clarifying that a little bit. Because I know you said 20 years, but I could just see some people. I'd rather have it be out there than have someone say, wait a second, you said we have to pay this for 20 years? Otherwise, I think this is, you know, a good working document, and I'm sure we'll be adding to it.
Okay, so as Katie said, this will live on the website and will be added to and revised as you continue to hear questions from around town.
Any more questions, board?
And actually, it's not, and in those cases. One of the things we had on the agenda under this material was campaign practices and EUA referendum guidelines, talking about the board role. We haven't really done that. And in addition, I suggested that we have somebody here to really give us those guidelines rather than to just give us a document. And there was at least one other board member who thought that would be a good idea. So I thought maybe somebody was going to present that. And it actually did say somewhere, "Presentation." And it's, so, "Review of the board role advocacy versus information." The other thing, it's nice to have somebody with that experience to kind of answer questions if people have not been involved in that before. It's just, because we're going to go out and do the information piece, it's really important to know where you're a board member and where you're an individual.
So I think once we get past the rest of the communications piece, we can have a really high-level talk about.
We're in it right now.
And.
We are in it today.
Absolutely. So I would say, let's have that conversation, let's do a little bit of question and answer. What I'm not comfortable doing, and I don't think either Katie and Krista are comfortable doing, is providing you with legal advice. We're not lawyers.
I didn't expect you to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Do have a document from a firm.
Sure.
And I know that we ask for this help, just like this.
Yep. So I've got that quarrels and Brady.
I know.
That will distribute.
That doesn't allow us to ask questions about that. So I'm just saying, when are we going to schedule that? Because we're out there now.
Well, you come back to that again, we're not done yet. So as we finish tonight, let's talk about that if there's additional questions.
I think there's two scenarios. Those came first, and we haven't even talked about how we're going to do this.
Yeah, we'll get to those, yeah.
So let's next go to the other big 11 by 17 that's landscape. This is our community stakeholder list for the district. Some of you may remember that this was largely put together starting last year by the Community Engagement Communications and Government Relations Committee. Many of you were there and present at those meetings and helped put this together, and your input was solicited, I think, also from the committee. So.
Question, do you have a similar one from our operational report?
Yes. And also the events calendar from the operational one, I might have that as well. Yes, thank you. A couple of things to note about this. It's tiny funds, and I'm sorry, so if there's any questions you have about what it says, let me know. But it's just a large document, so this is about as big as we can make it. It's not all-inclusive. So for example, I had a meeting yesterday with Jeff Schreiner, who mentioned that, you know, their coaches have, his coaches come in contact with parents and families all the time, and they're a great asset and a great resource for the school district to be advocates for the district and to provide information about the referendum. They're on board with that. They know that they can come to me anytime that they have questions, they have all the resources that they need to be able to do that. But that's not, you know, necessarily a group that we would put on our stakeholder list, although they are a key, a key piece of that right now. So it's not, you're not, don't look at this and say, you know, you're missing someone or there's someone there. Certainly if you think there's like a big group of people missing, let us know. But there are all sorts of groups and people that we're reaching out to. Another example is that a current member of the Community Engagement Committee mentioned last week at our initial meeting, and I met with him again today, to say, "I want you to come to our condo association." They've got four buildings out in Manona. We're, you know, trying to plan one night in each building, maybe by theme. People can kind of pick and choose what questions they have. That's not necessarily a group on here. Neighborhood associations around here, but I don't think, I think we haven't gotten to condos yet. Finally, we've already started meeting with a lot of these groups, and we meet regularly with a lot of these groups as well, Dan and Jared especially, when it comes to the village, town, and city government and the councils and boards within them. The Madison Eastside Business Association, essentially Manona, or Manona and Eastside. The Chamber, Cottage Grove Chamber. I've had meeting, a meeting, at least one meeting already with Diane at the Manona Senior Center. Had a lot of ideas of ways that we could work with all of those groups to make sure that we're getting all the information out to the entire community. And again, I want to make clear, and I think we all feel this way, that our community engagement with these groups is not for the next three months. It's undetermined how long, you know, hopefully forever. So we're building at a time where we do have a lot of needs and may have a lot of requests of those groups. But this is going to be something that will be ongoing from now until, you know, none of us are here anymore, I hope. So are there any questions or comments about the list, recommendations, additions? I'll go into, again, the events in a few minutes, but.
Are you planning on doing any targeted mailing? Not, I see you have general plans for mailing, but because there are several groups, particularly in Manona, that there are mailing lists of those.
Indeed. So in the October, Manona Senior Connection, we'll have a half-page ad on page five, so it'll be, my printer wasn't working, but it'll be like this. Page five, so it'll reach a couple thousand people. In Manona, it's, again, a lot like the postcard. It focuses on what the questions are and then more information, where to get it, how to meet us at the open houses. But also, you know, we're getting a little into the events now, talking about these things like Donuts with Dan. We're not always expecting people to come out to us. So at least one of those events will be at the community center and probably in connection with another, with other programming that they have. So that we're out there meeting people where they are. It's not always like, whatever time works for us, we've put this time on the calendar, we're coming, you have to come here. We don't, we want to make sure that we're getting out to where people are already going.
Katie, did I miss anything? Do you have the senior newsletter?
I do. So in October.
It's going to be in October?
In October.
For example, when you have that senior movie thing.
Yeah.
Who will be making that presentation?
So we can move into this calendar of events now. That's kind of where we're living already. I have events, locations, dates, times, and then on the far right-hand side, you'll see that attending. For the 2016 operational referendum calendar, similar to this, many of you were listed as having attended those and speaking at those, and I think everyone is in agreement that we would encourage you to do that again. As many voices that we can get out there, the better. So I would.
Add Romeo on that.
I just need the dates from you. It's not, I just need the date from you, when they need.
Diane will give you that.
Okay. So what you'll see already on here are as many events as our community calendars hold right now, minus a few that we still need to work on, including like high school athletics and band and orchestra. Those that are highlighted in green are meetings that we've already confirmed. You'll see either Dan or Jared's name to the right of those. If you have availability and time and you know you're able to get to any of these events, please just let me know, I'll. If you have availability and time and you know you're able to get to any of these events, please just let me know. I'll assign your name into one of them. I did confirm today also both Manona and Cottage Grove PTO's first meetings, and as well as the Cottage Grove Optimists. So those are in here as tentative, but, or is that, I'm sorry, that might be the Manona Optimists.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I noticed you have the Village of Cottage Grove Board and the Manona City Council. I don't see the town of Cottage Grove.
There, no, I don't know if they were available on their website, so I just need to get in touch with the-
When they're majoring here?
Yeah.
I just didn't see that on the list.
I believe it's the second Monday after the month.
For the town?
The next Romeo is September 21st, Friday, September 21st.
Thank you.
The other thing too, which I know some of you know because you've gone through it, is even if Dan is going or someone else has signed up, if you know some of the individuals that might be there and can be there just for another familiar face, that can be really helpful too, just so that, you know, they're seeing some of, you know, their circle of friends and people they know in the community. So feel free to piggyback on some of those too, if that works for you.
And now all of these events are re-formal and lend themselves to a formal presentation of source, but we are working on a brief PowerPoint-type presentation that can be used as technology allows.
So the town board meeting is the September 6th and also September 20th. So it's the 2nd, usually is the 2nd and 4th, but here it's the 1st and 3rd of each month. That is their board meeting.
The other thing, I'm, maybe I missed this, that you're gonna add that, but we had a list of all the school events.
Yeah.
Like the Ice Cream Social, which is Monday, at least one of them is, but it was this huge list. And we didn't necessarily speak, but we handed out the materials.
Are you planning on yard signs?
Not informational yard signs, no.
What?
No.
I think that's for the yes, if there's a committee, they handle that, right? The district doesn't.
We can, we can, yeah. We do a yard sign that says, "Here's information about-"
To your question, Susan, as well, as far as the different events, part of what that previous spreadsheet showed is there's different opportunities to actually present at events or to just have information there.
Right.
So some of those might be identified as the place where we'll have information. So I know we're gonna talk about a couple of things that are going to be more visible, but we can identify if some of them are really well-attended, and we want something above and beyond, not just materials, but a person there handing something out.
That's what we did. And I'm not seeing any of that on here, so if you have that, I'm not seeing it. So what we had a list was, so there was a musical at Winnequa, and I was there in the program. And then we just went through the trash and picked a whole bunch of backup, because some people kept them, some people didn't. But it was easy to recycle them. There was a music program at Glacial Drumline. There's a go-to-school, there's a ton of go-to-school stuff. The Ice Cream Social for the new kindergarteners. And that's Monday. So without those lists, we're not engaging the board in, if you want them to help.
So as far as the PTOs, I know they send out agendas ahead of time, but you have to ask, "Do we have their agenda?" They won't. Sometimes they tell you no, because I had that happen.
I've taken confirmation from both of them today that we are on the agenda-
Okay, for the first ones.
For the September meetings.
For the September meetings, okay.
Including if you and I-
Yeah, okay.
Yes, thank you.
So we could just use, I'm sorry, you could just sign up for those. I mean, if we wanted to commit tonight to going to these, we could let you know.
Yeah, and anytime. And again, will you tell me how the best way is to get your names on here? And also to update you when there's a, when there's new events? What is the best way?
Having a Google Doc or something that we could all get into. I don't know how to do that right now. Because then you could see which ones there were two, you know, it's nice to have a couple people at some of these. It's supposed to be one.
Absolutely.
But you could see if there were two people already, and then we'd sign up for a different one. And then you could be adding to that as you become aware of activities too. Would that make sense to people?
Yeah. The other thing that occurred, which I think we just need to understand is, you know, if if we've said, "We'll be there on a Friday night from 7:00 until 9:00," and another person comes and says, "Sorry, I'm doing it," you know, but again, just an understanding among ourselves that it's fine to have more than one person. I love having two people at the door. It makes it so much easier. But when you've made the commitment to be there and set your time aside to be there, if someone else is gonna be there, just give us a call and let us know, because then maybe we don't have to be there. Rather than, we're gonna hand that out, you can step away.
So I'll make it a Google Doc and share it out with everyone individually on the board, and then feel free to just, and I'm open to having you send events to me or email me also, if that's easier for you to say.
Did you go through the news? So basically, what we, some of us do is, because there are things we're specifically looking for, we go through every school newsletter and just look at that and say, "Oh yeah, I always go to the Ice Cream Social."
Good ideas. Thank you.
And do you want us to distribute? We had a sheet that we gave up. Remember that?
Yeah, that's what I was, wanna make that, because you don't wanna duplicate a ton of these. I mean, if the sheet were-
It was one single sheet.
Sure, just because the FAQs are great, but you don't wanna distribute them. So it sends people to website.
The fact sheet, I think it probably was a fact sheet that you were giving.
Yeah, it was.
Eight and a half, five of them.
Yeah, there was, yeah.
And that's, you know, scheduled to be ready the week of school starting, so the week of the 3rd or 4th.
So we're gonna have that before the first events, probably, yeah.
We will have, sorry, display boards that have some critical information on those, and those will be in all of the school buildings all the time. So in the entrances, and I, you know, Susan, I think it would be fine if we put that out in the garden on Monday. I don't think that, you know, that would be okay. But those will be there all the time, and then also at the Manona Library all the time, and at the Senior Center, Community Center, all the time, so that people will always have a place to go to reference those. And then we have some pull-up banners that will be more attention grammars. Really, there's some information on there, not the detail that a lot of people will want. We have one of those that will roam around in Manona, probably in public places, maybe at the Credit Union, maybe at Pick and Save, and then maybe another week it's at Silver Eagle. And then one for Cottage Grove, also roaming around somewhere in town in a public space. And then one for Dan and Jared to use at presentations that they're giving to groups.
And thinking of the fact sheet, that is a piece that will be mailed to households, so hopefully people will see it. But by the time they get it, maybe weeks have gone by, and the refresher is nice, so they can be handed out. And even if people don't want to take them or don't want to copy, still being visible is really important, because it's that reminder, "Oh, that's right, there are needs, and there's a referendum coming up, and I wanna look more into that." So whether they physically take something, or whether you're just there reminding them, both of them are very meaningful and worth the time.
Yeah, that opportunity to have face-to-face interaction with parents, with constituents, with community members is so important. Anything else on display boards, or are we good on that?
Yep, display boards will be visible next week. Standing banners probably following that. Again, we talked about the timing of the fact sheet, and then that newsletter that will come. So again, as a reminder, I know we've talked about it in the past, but the intent is to try to continue to build information. So the same messaging, but they might get a little bit more, and it is timed very strategically to make sure that they're getting all of the information in a time that they're thinking about that referendum. They're not getting it so early that they're forgetting it. So it's been building over time. So we're feeling really good about the amount of information they got before you even made a decision if you were going to referendum. So that's excellent. So now it's gonna be really nice to start seeing things more visibly and in different ways, too. The visual displays, people being places, social media, Facebook Live, all of these different ways. Hopefully, it's just resonating each time they're seeing something, so we're excited about the months ahead.
Any other questions, concerns, points you'd like to leave with us?
Are you meeting periodically?
Yes, we as a team meet on a weekly basis. Every other week by phone, every other week in person. So we've got a weekly meeting in some form or fashion during which we're talking about all of this, and specifically the implementation of the plan now moving forward.
That's on the grid, right, Andy?
Say that again?
Didn't I see that on the grid?
It is on the grid, yes. Yep. So you've got those dates.
So we can see, if we look at that engagement working document-
Yes.
Communication meetings is on there, and then it also shows us when you plan to continue to have that, right? That's the first row.
That's the ongoing meetings, I'm putting the team, yep.
The one other thing, sorry, if I can just add one more comment is, hopefully you've heard that a lot of this was formed off of the good work that you've already done as a board in the past for your past referendums. Feedback that we've been hearing, also the survey. You might remember that that survey asked people how they wanted to receive information. So we were feeling very good that we were reaching people in a way that they wanted to be reached, but there was still additional information. We learned from you, we learned from that survey, so that's part of how this has evolved. So I really feel good about all the different ways we're communicating is the top ways that people want to be communicated to. So hopefully, we're covering all of that, just as a reminder of that piece, too.
So then, as a segue, all of those communications, again, as we said at the outset, are factual in nature. This is an informational campaign. It is not an advocacy campaign. And it's important that I think everybody understands the difference. As we said, we are not your legal counsel, and we did not sleep in holiday, and the Express is last night. And you shouldn't treat our advice as legal advice. There is a document here from Corals and Brady that provides sort of detailed information as to what information is versus what promotional material, or more specifically, express advocacy is defined as. Again, the board can engage in that informational, let me step back. The district can engage in an informational campaign. It cannot use district resources for quote-unquote "express advocacy." I think it's important that you take a refresher look at this if you haven't looked at it already. And I know that Susan, I think Susan Manning, mentioned at the last board meeting a presentation from, was it Susan Wasby, attorney? That might be a good resource as well to refer to. But it's just really important to, again, understand that district resources, email, copiers, paper, and on down the line, cannot be used to engage in quote-unquote "express advocacy." What is express advocacy? It is explicit messages to support, vote for, vote against a particular policy item, or in this case, a referendum. District resources cannot be used for that. Now, board members, on the other hand, you have a First Amendment right. You can speak on non-district business. You can engage in, express advocacy work. That is clearly indicated in the memo from Corals and Brady. But I would suggest use some caution in that regard, okay? Again, I don't wanna go too far down this path, because we're not, we're not S wires. And I don't wanna provide you with legal advice. But I think the team here could potentially answer a couple of questions if you have those, if you have those questions.
I, you know, again, I'm a little surprised at the language and the way that Corals and Brady approached this. Under 2A, board members may speak freely, figure 4 against, there's a First Amendment, but what's basically been made clear in case law is that when you're in your role as a board member, you provide information. When you're operating as an individual, you can provide, you can do whatever advocacy you want.
Yes.
And that's the piece that I think is still not clear. It's pretty fuzzy. This answer is pretty fuzzy. And Joyce and I, and she was here at that last meeting, watched a webinar, and Barry Forbes only covered that piece. He talked about referendums. And she thought we would be able to have the, basically, the webinar accessible after we had seen it. Nobody else came, so it was just Joyce and myself in there. But there's some parameters here that I'm not seeing.
Is that the PowerPoint that is supposed to be in Word docs? I mean, it was Barry Forbes' PowerPoint that's on Word docs.
I saw that there was a PowerPoint, but I didn't see it posted.
Yeah, it is in Word docs right now, and so you can go through it.
So when I was looking earlier, I didn't see it. Is it, what's it, is it under the-
It's, it's the-
It is, there's a, is it under what?
Under this item.
Yeah, it's under this item, and-
There's three links.
There are three, yeah.
Yes, so types of referendum, initial resolution. What must be done for a referendum?
Part 3, advocacy and expenditures of public funds.
Okay, right. So that's it? That's the webinar? Okay, so people could watch that, and they can access it by clicking it?
Well, you can, yeah.
The PowerPoint's there. Okay, PowerPoint, alright.
But it, you know, I think-
I didn't see it as an attachment, so.
It's kind of-
I have to have Adobe Connect. You went right into the PowerPoint.
Yeah, it's still open, I don't know. I think what's, what this doesn't spell out clearly is that, yeah, I, saying that you can help organize committees, I wouldn't advise that we do that, but I, I think it's sort of the rule that we always have as board members, though, that when you're giving your personal opinion, you make it clear that it's your personal opinion, that you're not speaking for the board. So if you show up at some of these meetings and you say, you know, and you wanna give your opinion, you have to make sure it's your opinion. Whereas if we are going to these events as representative board, that's when we have to be very careful that we're simply giving information. You know, if you're, if someone asks you, "What do you really think about this? You're gonna think we need this," which is a likely question to get asked in the grocery store or something, you might say, "My personal opinion is yes." I mean, you could, you know, and, yeah, but I think it's kind of like when you answer an email from somebody or a question, you always have to specify that you're speaking for yourself and not for the board. And, you know, this is, so, yeah, some of us, I was surprised too to say that you could go organize meetings. I don't think that's, I've never been told that's appropriate before. I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that.
WSB has given us guidelines that I think are a little clear about that. WSB has given us guidelines that I think are a little clear about that. Again, as an individual, absolute, you can advocate, but you have to make it very clear. And what people say is, well, how do they know the difference if it's you as a board member or you as an individual? And that's exactly what you tell them. You say, I'm not speaking as a board member. So those are the rules I was expecting, the parameters that I was expecting to see here. And then why didn't we get this from Mike Chalk?
Quarles and Brady is our legal counsel for referendum work, for our questions. The committee does involve the work with PMA and is involved with the financing part?
Well, I understand the financing part, but, I mean, you can't beat the background and the experience of Board McClark in referendum and board roles. And actually, the WSB piece was better than this. Very made it clearer. You talked about the First Amendment.
So it seems like there's some questions about this document and.
A little unclear.
Right, and I mean, rather than, I mean, because I have questions too. I don't know if you maybe missed the future meetings, but.
That's all right.
Would be helpful for me, maybe Dan, is if we can set up a time where we, the board members, could talk to an attorney and ask, ask questions about potential, you know, things we might say.
So let me.
That's what I thought we'd requested to do.
Okay, so let me put this out. So Dan, how soon will we need to talk about this? If we could put it in a special meeting that's coming up? I mean, we don't wanna hold on to this, too long, right? So should we move this to our?
Future meetings.
One of the future meetings here.
I'd like to do that.
The guidelines we had for the, for the operational referendum were much clearer. And basically, board members are very free to speak out as a board member.
I think you mean.
You're in, you're in, you know, mild support or I oppose, whatever it might be, and.
Yeah, I mean, if it would have to be something that, you know, we require, I would like to go to it. But I mean, that way we can at least have the opportunity to meet with somebody and ask questions. Hey, what happens if I say this? Or I'm thinking of talking to my neighbor and I, you know, this is what I said. I just wanna discuss that I can do that, but is that true, you know, or just clarify?
I, I don't think there's any question, but on the previous referendum, there were, there was not a clear understanding of the board role in the activities of the board in relation to the Glacial Drumline.
Yeah, and that building one.
I think, I thought our last operational one.
Okay, so there's two things we can do. I, I certainly can find additional resources, you know, to share with the board in writing from other law firms. So we can do that. But if you'd like to also have an opportunity to actually speak to an attorney, we can arrange for that. There's either at our next regular board meeting on September 12th or we could do it at a special meeting for those that are interested. But we might be, you know, limited on dates and just have to pick a date that.
Dan, if you just, if you just find the document on board role and, you know, employee role and what they, from the operational referendum, it's much clearer than this and it was very precise.
Well, the EUA one.
That is, I'm pretty sure that's the document that we had.
Same document. And you just got it tonight. It's the one that looks like.
We just got this one right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one page.
I'm quite certain that's the one that we had.
Well, it's.
It's a lot clearer than the.
It is.
It's clearer than the Quarles and Brady thing I just read.
So would you like additional besides those two?
To be the most efficient thing, if people, I don't feel like I need it, but if people do feel like we need it, I would think the most efficient thing would be to see if one of the WSB people or, or we could see if Board McClark person could come to the next board meeting. I don't see setting up a separate meeting, because it might be, two people might show up or something. You know, if it's at the board meeting, then everybody can kinda hear the same thing.
And ask questions.
Or Barry Forbes, or.
Yeah, so I'd say Barry or remember, I mean, a bunch of those, either, any of those guys could do it because they, if they're free, I mean, they're all busy, so.
So we should do this September 12th, closed session? And then we can continue afterwards as well, if needed?
It, it would have to be an open session.
Yeah, it would be an open session.
Yeah, there's nothing confidential, so.
So he would come here and we would ask the questions, sir?
Yeah, yeah.
We'll put that in the agenda. Okay, any further discussion on that one?
I think we're good, yeah. Any other questions, events?
No, I, the only thing I noticed that's not on here is that there are some back-to-school night things. Are we thinking that that's kind of a hard time to, because parents are really focused on getting out and collecting, trying to have time to set these things up? Okay, but then, so we can look for the Google Doc soon and a few other district calendar. There are some events, you know, a few events.
Yeah, let's let the, let the parents and kids have next week.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's, there's too much.
Yeah, I'm a parent of a kid too.
I will say that some of the displays might start popping up. So there won't be someone there staffing it or there, you know, answering questions, but you might start to see some of those visible by that point.
Okay, that's, that makes sense.
Well, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Moving forward to the next three months.
Move to adjourn.
Oh, we haven't, we're not there yet.
We still have future meetings.
Yeah, future meetings.
Do we have future meetings?
We know that September 5th is, is gonna be rescheduled. Now we know we're gonna add this open part for September 12th. We have our special meeting coming up. We talked about September 24th, correct? Or 25th? Is that 24th?
25th, so the one on this that was listed as September 5th is the one that is now the 25th, correct?
All right. Well, I like to hear a motion to.
Could all the meetings, could we get the all the meetings on, as an email?
Yes, yes.
That we've decided on.
Will do, yeah.
Close session and everything.
Any other questions?
Move to adjourn.
I'd like to hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Deny.